Hello, hello everyone! Hope you're all having a fantastic weekend. So we're gonna start this up. Um, so hello for the folks that are streaming in, I'm Yacine, I'm your host for today. And uh, we're going to do some more um, uh, lead code style machine learning slash deep learning question. This question today that we're gonna try to solve, I disclaimer have zero idea. What, I have zero idea what we're talking about. I think it's like stuff related to embeddings. But I just picked it up because it look super cool. Um, so it's about hyper vector. And hyper dimensional computing. So I think that's like a, a field I'm not too familiar in, so uh, we're gonna check this out. I'll post a link uh, over here. Uh, for those that are new, we're always working on this little website. Um, that I absolutely love. It's a deep ML, right? And how it works? I always do that. There's a whole bunch of question, right? Related to like deep learning or machine learning in general, right? So you have like the deep learning ones, we're going to them right now. And last time we did the, um, and we didn't do the autograd together, I did it in a separate video. But you have a, a whole lot of videos, uh, sorry, a lo- a whole lot of questions here. And then, um, the cool thing with them is that you have the question, right? Then you have the learn about, because which we're, we're always digging to figure out how to do the stuff. And it's like very text driven, it will explain to you exactly what's up with an example. And then you have a whole bunch of little like features that you can use in order to actually try to do the, the task. So here you have your code where you're gonna write it up and it's like lead code, so like when you're gonna write it, you're gonna get feedback. But the guy that is building this ha- also have like all sort of little feature to help you out, so if you run it, it's like garbage. Let's say you run it here, there's no result there, but like, um, you can have a hint. Uh, generated by LLM that will look at your code and then look at the difference. That's pretty cool. And then there's this feature that I should use more, I know I should use more. Uh, but it's breaking down the problem into like sub-problem, so you can then actually go through it. Um, yeah, so it's pretty, it's pretty nice. And then you have like a solution, videos, comments over there. A pretty cool uh, website altogether, so do check it out. And um, yeah, so let's dive into it. Remember the format, right? This is not too important, like the, I'm gonna put it fullscreen for impact. Like this is not really that important, uh, like uh, um, the lead type, lead code type of stuff, right? It's really just for your own training. Um, but like what's more important in um, in general is like to uh, uh, to do project and then to ask questions if you have, uh, if you have some, right? So like uh, this is more of a, um, of a, a ru- a room for you to come in with your machine learning, deep learning question. And uh, even like the one that are related to uh, hiring, getting a job, uh, getting an internship. I can uh, I can help by uh, answering a bunch of question. So notice that, notice that to put them into the chat. And uh, I'll uh, I'll read through them as uh, as they come. So, that being said, uh, let's actually try to figure out what is a hyper vector. Um, let's read about it a bit. So our task here is to generate a composite hyper vector using hyper dimensional computing. I have no idea what the composite hyper vector is. Uh, yeah, wait. Okay, well, I think we're gonna have to do a lot of like, um, uh, like uh, detective work to situate ourselves a bit. If any of you knows what the, ever heard the term hyper vectors and like hyper dimensional computing? Let me know because I might have missed like a whole field. Um, hey Ahmad, nice to, nice to meet you. Also shout out to like uh, the four, four members that we have, uh, supporter. Uh, I always find it funny when like uh, one of you guys like uh, decide to, to, to become a supporter for this channel, because it's at 99 cents. And like, there's, there's just no perk, it's just like out of goodness of your heart. And um, it's just, it's just nice to see that like some people are, are supporting. Um, as channel that is like purely like very niche technical stuff. Okay, let's get back to it. Your task is to implement the function create row hyper vector, this thing, we have row, dimension, random seed, okay? I think there's, if there's random seed, it means that like there's some randomness into the network, so that's pretty important. Um, and we need to generate a composite hyper vector. I don't know what's, why are we saying composite? Uh, okay. And then uh, using hyper dimensional computing, each feature in the row is represented by binding hyper vector for the feature name. And its value. Each features in the row is represented by binding hyper vectors for the feature name and its value. Okay, wait, wait, wait. There seem to be something important here. About like binding feature name and its value. Okay. The hyper vector for the value are created using the same feature seed provided in random seed dictionary to ensure producibility. All feature hyper vector are then bundled to create, to create a composite hyper vector for the row. Okay, a dictionary represent in a data set, a data set row where each key are val- and feature, wait. Where keys are feature names and values are their corresponding values. Okay, that makes sense. Dimensionality of the hyper vector, okay, cool. Okay, so what's up here? So if we look at the inputs, what do we have? We have that. Right? So disclaimer, I, I really like to just like draw stuff, um, so I'll do a lot of drawing here. Um, so like we have these, you see, you have, we have feature and uh, feature A value 1, feature B value 2, right? Uh, so we have that together and then we have what? That together. Yeah, and then the dimensionality is like how much, okay. So dim is related to the output. And random seed for, okay, so this is for feature A, we have 42. And feature B, we have 7. So we have a different seed for the different. Okay, where, right? So what's, what's up? What are we doing here? Uh, and this is the output, okay, so this is, this is our output. It goes from uh, minus 1 to 1. Okay, right, um. Happ- okay, so let's, let's get some background information, right, before jumping in. So hyper dimensional computing is a computational model inspired by the brain's ability to represent and process information using high dimensional vectors. Based on hyper vectors being quasi orthogonal. Right. It use vector with a large number of dimension to represent data. Where each vector is typically filled with binary or bipolar value. In our case, I think it's bipolar, right? Okay, let's write it down. Bipolar values. It's between uh, minus 1 and 1. Okay. So far, I, I don't have a clue how we're gonna do it though. To represent complex data pattern binding, a binding, we, we saw that before, what did it say? Uh. They say here, each feature in the row is represented by binding hyper vectors for the feature name and its value. It seems to be important. And then what? The hyper vector for the value are created using the same feature seed provided in bar. All feature hyper vector are then bundled to create composite hyper vector for the, okay, I think this is a pretty important, that. So uh, by the way guys, um, just um, some uh, tips when you're gonna, like when you're working on like, um, I, this applies to any problem really. Like one of the first thing I always do is like gather almost too much information, right? I ha- like there was this quote by um, like a von Neumann, I think it, the guy is called. It's like, don't try to solve a problem, right? Try to understand like, um, a difficult problem so much that it becomes trivial. That's, that was kind of, I think the essence of the quote. Um, so instead of trying to, like when you try, when you're faced with like a very difficult problem, you have no clue about. Like if you go and try to actually do it, like just straight up try to do. Uh, usually it's very hard, right? But if like you know the problem and you don't know how to do it, and then you like, you kinda uh, uh, see it as a, uh, as a meta problem to understand enough of the steps. So that like the steps are, are direct and trivial, um, usually it's like much easier. Saying that, I have no clue still how we're gonna do this. Um, but each feature in the row is represented by binding hyper vector for the feature name and its value. Like, there seems to be something we're doing here. Right? That is called a binding operation. Uh, seems to be the same thing here too. I don't know if it's related to the... I, I think it's also related to the seed. And then like there's another thing that I saw before. Where is it? Bundling. I don't know what bundling is, but like... All feature hyper vectors are then bundled to create composite hyper vector for the row. Okay, I think this then becomes like that. And then we're gonna do what? Bundling? And I think like these are related in some ways, right? Uh. Like that, something like this? Not too sure. That seed is important for the binding? Uh. Yeah, I think, like, I think like our first thing is like what is binding? Yeah, because I, I don't know. I think if we figure this out. Yeah, if we figure binding, I think we're gonna be good. And then the second question is like what is bundling? Right? Yeah, I think that's it. Uh, in HGC, different data types such as numeric and categorical variable are projected into high dimensional space through specific encoding process. Categorical variable are assigned unique hyper vector, often randomly generated binary or bipolar vectors that serve as a representation for each category. Oh, okay, cool. Okay. Numeric variable are encoded by discretizing the continuous value and mapping discrete bins to hyper vector. Yeah, this I don't get it. This projection allow HGC model to integrate various data type into a unified high dimensional representation preserving information across complex multi feature data set. Is this like, uh, uh, like are we just having categorical variable or what? We have what? Feature A value 1, feature B value 2, okay. Here we have what? Feature value 1, value 2. Okay, it's just categorical. Okay. So, I think that's important for us. So this is uh, gonna be the categorical categorical definitions. Yep, that's it. Okay, so um, what it says, says like, uh, so this part. So um, so this, this stuff is randomly generated, right? This is where our seed comes in. And then, oh, it's bipolar. And a representation of each category. Okay, cool. And then, okay, we have the binding operation. The binding operation between two hyper vector is performed element wise using multiplication. Oh, wait. Okay, wait, I think we're missing a point here. Before the binding stuff, we need to actually, oh yeah, I think that's the sh- the issue. So this is the binding operation, right? But then like, uh, create a categorical uh, hyper vector. Oops. There's a step that we're missing here in our ideas. And I think this is it, so you have like, you have uh, in this case, I think we have like a string. And then you have to end up with like, uh, an, a bipolar array of size, dim. Yeah. Like that's what, that's a transformation I think we're need to do here. Um. Yeah, that's what we're, what we're missing. Here. So this I don't know. This I have no clue here. Yeah, I don't know that, but uh, binding I know. So this is not too hard, I think, like because as soon as you have you just multiply them together, because you can have the array, another array, you multiply them and inside, because it's all between 1, because it's all 1 and minus 1. If you have 1, 1 at the position, it's good, you're gonna get what? If you have, as soon as you have a negative, you're gonna flip. If you have 2 negative, you're gonna flip, flip, so you're just gonna keep having a negative. So like, that's easy. Right, so this is the binding. Sorry. This is the binding operation. So it's in effect, just like some multiplication. Right? Uh. And it's element wise multiplication. Okay, that's fine. And then bundling, the bundling operation sums multiple hyper vector to combine information. Typically using element wise addition for bipolar vector and XOR for binary. We have bipolar, so it's element wise addition. This operation aggregate Ah, yeah, and we have to normalize it. How do we normalize that? Okay, that is next to them. Oh, okay, cool. So in this case, it's gonna be a element wise addition. Otherwise we're not. I don't know what, what this thing is used for though, like um, I would like to know. I, I, I think it's like one way of encoding something that is complicated. Um, what the, what the heck is hyper c- upper computing? What, what's the name? Hyper dimensional computing. Is a computational approach that is represented for machine using hand initial vectors, is this probably the brain? Yeah, this, we already know. Okay. It's you, okay, this is so, um... Is motivated by the experience that cerebellum cortex operate on, on high dimensional data representation? The cerebellum, why are we? Uh, we're always coming back to the brain, huh? Like uh, every, every live stream, live stream, the brain pops up um, right away. And did you know that like, um, like if you see, if look at most studies of the brain? Like, you, you rarely see this. Like you rarely, you, you always see like that part, the cortex, and then like nothing here. The, the cerebellum is like deeply, deeply understudied. Um, except in labs that specialize in cerebellum. Like there's multiple reason for this, but like one of the main reason is that, um, okay, let's look at the EG headset. Uh, not these. Like, if you look, if you look at like uh, uh, the medical one, look at this. You see this? Like the cap, right? The one thing that it doesn't like record on is like the cerebellum. Because it's too hard to like record here, um, like effectively. Uh, so like most of the stuff are just like recording cortex things. Uh, even on the, in the FMRI, like people just like remove the cerebellum completely. Um, yeah, this has to do more with movement. It's a bit of a weird like um, uh, part of the brain because it's, it's mostly movement stuff, um. Yeah, yeah, it's mostly movement. And the cells in there are like super wild. It's not the same ones that you have in the cortex. It's like a separate, literal, literal separate brain uh, that you have. Um, yeah. But it's, it's a, it's a very old, old part of our, of our whole uh, uh, brain. Okay, in AGC informations, they're represented as a hyper dimensional long vector. Thousand of number that represent point in space of thousand of dimension as a vector symbolic architecture is an older name for the same. Okay. Artificial event system. What the fuck, what are we saying? I'm discovering like a whole new field. Have you heard about the artificial event system? What is this? Uh, right, so a class of rule based machine learning system inspired the principle and process of the vertebrate event system. A typically maleficial event system characteristic of learning and memory for problem solving. Specifically for the computation technical evolutionary computation in number first computation. Yo, what the hell? Is a subfield of biologically inspired computing and natural computation with interest in machine learning? Uh, okay, cool, cool, cool. But what is, like, I have never heard of this. I've heard of like cybernetic and all of this. But never artificial event system. Is it like a, like a, uh... Like the evolutionary type of uh, algorithm type thing? There's selection algorithm here. Uh, there's negative selection here, even networked algorithm, then with Excel. Uh. You had never heard of this. Okay. And uh, data is mapped from the input space to sparse HGC space under an encoding function. I have to need a structure or subject to corruption by noise order failure. Okay, okay. Um. So it's a very transparent, okay. In memory computing, which compute, first I develop low power HGC order accelerator. What the heck? I have no clue guys, like this is the f- Nasif, I, this is the first time I'm hea- hearing about all of this sto- I have no clue, zero. It's like I've discovered like a, a whole new field. What is a memory state, memory store? What are we saying? What is this? Is a nonlinear two terminal electrical component relating electrical charge? What is that stuff? I, I feel like we're um, we're in a parallel universe, right? Like uh, where I don't know, deep learning never took off or something like that. Artificial event system, what the heck? Um. Okay, wh- wait, what the, where is this used? Like what's the... Okay, image recognition, okay. HGC algorithm can replicate task, task long completed by deep neural matrix, thus classifying image. Cool. Uh, the feature of each image, you link hyper vector per image. So is this like a pre co- pre like pre convolutional or network type of thing? Okay, reasoning, hyper vector can also be used for reasoning. Progressive matrix present image of object in a grid, one position, the grid is blanked and the test is to choose from candidate that one that best fit. Yo. I have no clue where this is coming from, like... And it seems to be still kinda relevant, like we have this from Cornell in 2023. Um. You have, you have these stuff. You have MNIST, they can do MNIST and things like that. Yeah, I'm ki- I'm kinda just like in shock guys, like uh, I am, I had no clue like this was a thing. Okay. Um, cool. Uh, let's, let's try to figure out our stuff now. So like, okay, this I know. And then we have the new normalization. How do we do that? Normalization ensure that the final bundle vector contain only bipolar binary value. The normalized function typically, typically apply thresholding process that transfer any value greater than 0 to plus 1 and any value less than 0 to minus 1. Zero value then typically assigned to either plus 1 or 1. Okay, cool, this is good. So yeah, in our case we have to do that after that, right? So this is the normalization step. So what is normalization? So, like all this I get, right? All this part. This whole part I get. It's not hard. This is like, if you have a hyper vector, you're doing the multiplication, right? And if you have ba- like uh, sorry, if you have uh, uh, you need to do binding with the mu- uh, hyper vector, you just do multiplication. And if you do, need to do um, bundling to like things that are different, to feature set that are different. You do bundling and then you do normalization that, after that thing, the whole thing, for uh, the bipolar. That, that will give you another like a vector. Honestly, this whole thing seems to be very similar to embeddings, right? Like uh, if you think about it like, um, even like positional encoding, technically speaking, what you're doing in like the old ways of doing it, like absolute positional encoding. You were just like, um, in, in adding up the, the vector uh, for position to uh, the actual vector that you had for, that meant something, right? You just did a plus, which is like what we're doing in the bundling. It's like a bundling operation. Um. Okay, cool, yeah. Seems to be legit. So consider scenario where we want to represent like combined information from each feature in a row of a data set. Each feature whether numeric or categorical is represented by a hyper vector and these hyper vector are combined to form a composite vector that represent the entire row of data. It also look like kind of a way to like one hot, not really one hot, but like encode stuff that are very not similar, right? Um. I think the only thing that we're missing is this encoding function from categor- categorical to to just like ju- just binary or bipolar. I have no clue how we're gonna do this. It has to have something that is random and then we have to jam it into some dimension, but how? And these hyper vector are combined to form a composite. For instance, if we have a data set with row with feature, feature A and feature B, we'd create a hyper vector for the column feature A, another for its specific value. We create a hyper vector for feature B and another for its specific value. We'd bind by each feature's column hyper vector with the hyper vector represents value from a unique vector of each feature. We bundle all feature hyper vector for its row to create a single composite vector. And then we normalize. Yeah, this, this, this is fine. Like if you look at the step here. Right? Like this is what we need to do, right? That stuff. In my view, this is easy, this is easy, this is easy, this is easy. Like, how do you do that? How do you create a hyper vector for the column feature A? Right, I don't know. Uh... It seems to be like, guys, this, this seems to be used over here, not sure. Um. Did we miss something? So we just randomly generate them. How would we randomly generate those? How? I I don't know. It is a function that we need to create. Yo, it's wild. See here, this is analogous to the learning process conducted by fruit fly olfactory system. Input is rough a roughly fifty dimensional vector corresponding to the other receptor neuron type. The H D representation use two thousand dimension. Um. It's wild, man. I never heard of this. Uh have you like have you ever seen the olfactory system? It's crazy. It's crazy stuff, like these things, like uh uh this is in human, but like these things are 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 wild, like uh. Uh did you know that like the the these neurons are literally kind of exposed to the outside and like they're catching chemicals? This is like the scent and that's where it's firing up straight to your brain, like uh the the space between the outside and your brain is like a very thin in the olfactory system, like there's literally something that need to connect, right, with the cilia? And then like that's how you're 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 smelling it. Um it's crazy stuff. So okay, that seems to be some way to encode that. Are we are we are we just gonna do like some randomly? Like we have our what we have like here, we have like, we know how it ends, right? So let's say we have five, we have one, two, three, four, five, right? We know our encoding is bipolar. So like here we say it's like uh this is gonna be bipolar. Right? So it has to be between minus one and one and then we have what? We have our random seed. So we have our random seed, let's say it's forty two. And then we have, let's say, the literally string feature A. So somehow we have to go through some random stuff and then this will produce something. Randomly one, one, something like this. And this somehow has to work for like value one also. So it's the same thing like for value one. And it goes through the same process. Uh. Well, I don't know. If you have any ideas, folks, uh. Can vectorize? There seems to be this. Wait. Define a vectorized function which take a nested sequence of object or numbed as arrays as input and return a single number array of a tuple or number. Yeah, I don't know. I don't think that has nothing to do with this. I don't know. Um. What are we saying? What? How? Do you guys have any any ideas here? Cause I'm a bit stumped because how do you go from a s- series of strings to this? And it has to have some element of random, like is it purely random? Okay, it's randomly generated. I can do generate whatever the heck I want. That serve as representation for each category. Oh, I think I get it. Think I get it. Uh no, I don't get it. Oh no, I think I get it. No, I think I get it. Okay, I get it, okay. So what are we effectively saying here is that it doesn't matter, it it literally doesn't matter. If um this is like minus one or like z- oh sorry, or like one, 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 minus one. When in different runs, it it literally doesn't matter because the encoding doesn't mean anything, right? Unless we want it to mean something. It's when you do the difference, like different uh addition, multiplication, that it start to mean something. So like it can literally be anything. It doesn't matter. You need to fit fit bipolar or binary, but it just need to be something and be cons- consistent, right? Because i- if you think about it also like in the olfactory system, what like it doesn't matter which it just it just matter that like the the fruit flies or whatever knows that this specific hypervector is me- it means let's say this scent or this other scent, right? It's flexible by default. It's like just like the number of bins that you have. This is it, right? Um so in our case, uh I think I got I got it like um we're gonna for fe- for the thing that is called feature A, we're just gonna randomly create a hypervector with this bipolar thing. And then same thing for fe- for value one, we're just gonna create a random hypervector. Um and you see, we do it on on this. This is why we can test it because we're doing column feature A first and another one for feature value. So we do one, another one. So this is why we can test it because you're gonna generate the hypervector with this random seed like this with this at this length. And then the next set of like five or like dimension that you're gonna you're gonna create will be uh right after that, right? So it's gonna be these numbers. Um and then like uh it will be a random function. And after that for the feature B is gonna be like uh let's say uh this dimension, it's sorry, this the random seed. So you're still gonna know what each should should be, so we can test the bind the bundle and the normalize. I think I get it. I think this is good. So like the formula that we have here um should take like uh the random seed right in. And then it should output uh this. And it it doesn't matter if it's this or that, like uh this doesn't matter at all. This is not what we we give. We give that, right? And um we just create a bipolar one. And how do we create that? Uh well, well, um random number generator, number pi. Can we can we get like a random float in the half open interval? Okay, yeah, cool. And then like um I I can I can define the, yeah, this is good. This is good. I'll use that, right? And then I'm just gonna, yeah, I'm just gonna test out the stuff here. Okay, cool. And then I want to have import uh how's it called? Uh from port random. Can I do that? No. Uh how do I import that stuff? I can j- I can just, okay, I can just do N P dot random. Okay, sorry, I'm just gonna put myself a bit smaller. So N P dot random. That's it. Default R N G, what's that default? Is there more than a default? What uh? Oh, I like this one better. Um. Okay, yeah, I can use that one, but I I can't have zeros. And is there a binormal in this? Um by no normal. Well, there's a hyperdiametric here. Yeah, this one is not that, right? Hmm. Because I, in my case, I need it to be between m- minus one and one. I don't know, sorry, it's not the binormal, it's a bipolar. Okay, well. Bipolar n- number generator. Uh what the, I don't know. I don't wanna, yeah. Okay, wait, numpy. Let's do a bit of Googling here. Uh numpy generate uh array of number sampled from uh array, something like this. Ah, random choice. Wait here, random choice. Think that's a good one, okay. So what would it be that uh? Okay, um. Okay, wait. If an array, a random sample generated from its element, if an int, the random sample generated from. Okay. Then we can set this. I think this is good. I think that's good enough. Oh wait, yeah, I think this is good enough. So we're gonna do what? N P random dot choice, I guess. And then we're gonna do what? We're gonna do um an array of minus one, one. And then we're gonna set the size. Check, can I just can I just say five, I guess? Let's say five. And then what do we need else? Uh P, what's P? Okay, yeah. Okay, we got it. That's it. So that's should be good, right? Um and how do I put? Um how do I give to the number? I can say default R N G and then seed. Okay, I think that's, I think we're getting there, guys. Default R N G and then we're gonna do seed equal, let's say, uh forty two. Right? And then say like uh bipolar uh generator. Right? And then we're gonna do bipolar R N G dot choice. Okay, 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 okay. And it's this is the seed, random seed equal forty two. We're gonna put that stuff here. R N seed here and then we're gonna have like something like dimension here five over here. And uh yeah, that's it. So then if I could give it ten, we should still see that. Uh we should, yeah, good. But I think we got it. Yeah, I think this is good. So put it here. So um uh def generate hyper vector and then we're gonna have uh the the dimension and then the random seed. Seed, right? So this is for one hypervector. So we're gonna return um uh N P dot brand, no, uh. Wait, so. Genr- R N generator. R N generator dot choice minus one, one, and then we go and give dimension. I don't need to give it the random seed because I'm gonna give it the generator directly. Yeah, I don't wanna recreate the generator multiple time. Yeah, I guess. Okay, that's good enough. Okay, so I need that. Right? And I would I'll do something like for row for feature in row. And I will do something like this. Get the random seed somehow. And then we do the stuff, okay. But what is the val- like how do we do that? The row is this. We have a feature and then a value. And then the feature and then the value. Feature A, value eight, value one. And then this these are the random seeds. Okay, yeah. Um I think I need to zip them. In for feature seed in zip row random seed. Is that it? I is this something? Feature C? Yeah, what's hyper like? Good question. I'm more proficient in SQL, but this isn't. I need a um I need them answer. So I too had no clue what is a like if you go into that rabbit hole um feature A, feature A, feature B, feature B, none. What the heck? Uh what are we? No, that's not true. That's not good. But we have yeah, it's a it's a dictionary. But I'm never gonna get get the okay, wait. That's not good. Ah, wait um uh iterate. Ah, wait. No, yeah, that's that's good. I think it. So what I need to do here is for okay, for feature in row and then I can get the seed by doing random seeds feature and then I do because it's like a key here, right? Actually, it's like feature key. And I can do that. Key. And get my seed, I'm gonna hit my feature by saying like uh feat row feature key, I guess. Should get me my stuff. Ready one forty two. Okay, cool. So for the question, what is hyper vector? I had no clue, I to be very honest. So it's also do with hyperdimensional computing, right? Which is a whole field I didn't know existed and it's a field that is related to um artificial human ement system, which I had no clue. To be like a hundred percent honest here. And it's a bunch of uh algorithm that are kinda biologically related and in this case it's related to the ement system um and how it learns. I uh it's a it emerged in the mid nineteen eighties with article authored by Farmer, Packard and Pearlson uh on ement networks. Like what the I I feel like I I messed up uh I missed like a a whole a whole field um. And this this paper here, I think it's uh this is article uh can we can we get it? No, we can't uh. Give me um give me two second. I'm gonna I'm gonna get it. I'm gonna get this from uh from my organization. Uh can I get it with my organization? Ah, yes. I got it. I got it from my organization. Do I don't do that. I just wanna yeah, I can save it from what's the name? The even system. Okay. Uh I'm just gonna get it. It's here. Okay, we we got the paper. Um the image system is capable of learning memory and pattern recognition. By employing generating operator on a time scale fast enough to observe experimentally, the ement system is able to recognize novel shape without pre-programming. Here we describe a dynamical model for the ement system that is based on the network hypothesis of Jern and is simple enough to simulate on a computer. This model has a strong similarity to an approach to learning and artificial intelligence introduced by Holland. Called the classifier system, we demonstrate that simple version of the classifier system can be cast as a nonlinear dynamical system. Spoke analogy between ement and classifier system in detail through this careful thing we hope to gain insight to the way it performs specific task. Woo! I had absolutely no clue that this whole thing was a thing. Um uh which makes sense, I guess, like that like because the ement system is a learning machine in some so sort of sense. And uh you can see here like this hyper vector that we're talking about, right? Like this is it. It's in there. Um but no no clue that this was uh like uh this was studied at this level um in any shape or form, which I think like I should have known. Um Honestly, I think I'm gonna do another live stream just to go through this paper. Um yeah, anyway, let's go back to hyper vectors. But like just knows that it comes from this in some some cer some se sort of sense, right? It comes from this them uh type of learning. You see here the binary version of it, right? Um but it's all just a way of encoding and we see saw the same thing in the olfactory system. Uh yeah, okay. Um the amount of algo natural teachers is insane, so we're yeah, it's it's like completely crazy, man, like um and like and that's why uh last last stream what I was talking about. Remember that? Like um I was saying like um uh because we were looking at the neural dynamic type of um of article where like they tried to reproduce how like the the synapse were model and then how like the actual neuron were as an M L P, right, was more model. And then they were using like the oscillations in order to like um actually kinda get to the answer, right? And then they had this concept of ticks. Um but like that's the same thing like uh what I mean is that if you just consume L L M based research, right? You're just gonna like y y you're gonna think about that only. But there's so much more out there and then like um like uh there there's so much more and there's so much like other type of uh memory and tha type of learning and memory that is exists in your in your just your whole body, right? Because yes, there's the the central nervous system, but what we're saying, the central nervous system in most cases, I want to try to modelize, is mainly just like the cortex. But you have a whole other lo lot of neurons, right? You have like uh the the in the cerebellum is different, right? You have the ement system that is completely different in term of learning than your brain. And you have like the whole gut eco ecosystem here that is like as much neuron that has in your central nervous system, but it's another type of uh of learning. Um then you have like evolution in general that is encoding the stuff at the end in the genes. But like there's so much more than the cortex, right? And if we're just try to emulate that or even approximate it with a neural deep learn network and just call it day, I think we're missing a whole lot. Um oh nice, yeah, be there. It's a um I don't think it's easy to ask question. I love them. Okay, let's go back to this. Um so we got we got the two stuff that we need, right? So at the end of the day, what we have here for each of the iteration, we're gonna have the features. We're gonna have the key uh sorry, we have gonna we have the keys. Uh we're gonna have the feature per se. We have the seed, right, for that specific feature. And then what we need to do is uh just do our two hyper vectors. So hyper vector uh feature and then we're gonna have hyper vector uh for our value, right? And by the way, folks, um Mo that is over here is the one that built the website. So if you if you have any question about the website, uh do um uh do ask him. And we can do generate uh hyper vector. Okay, and then I have to give it a our random uh generator. Okay, this one. I do it once. Right? With my seed. My seed is this. And then I do it once and I use it twice. I'm gonna use it twice. Give my bipolar R N G here and then I give it my dimension that I need and I do the same thing here. Hyper vector, give it my bipolar R N G and dimension. And uh I can just print that now. printf. So my feature is gonna be that. Uh hyper vector feature and then and my value is gonna be this. Hyper vector value. Okay, let's let's actually write the value, which is that. Let's actually write the feature key. I guess that's it. That's that. Yeah, okay. Do we have something that makes sense? Oh, sorry, print. printf. Uh feature A, this and value one, this. And then feature B, this and then value two, this. Yeah, seems seems were reasonable. Right uh? So so far, okay, we're good. We we get we get these. And I'll just need to store them, right? Um hyper vectors. Uh I'm just gonna s I'm just gonna store them at the end. So here at the end need to store both for bundling. And here we're gonna do yeah, okay, perfect. I get it. So this is step one. Step one is finding the features plus value after hyper vector creation. Um Okay, so I like I I'm planning to learn L L M M L on D L M this summer and I would love to know how you have started your journey like to learn these topics. Okay, so um we have a question, so we're gonna stop a bit. Um so how I learned um machine learning is um I actually uh yeah, uh I I actually took a course in my university year um because I had a project that was related to machine learning and I had no clue, right? So it was actually a research project. So I knew how to do programming and stuff and then like um I knew that have some bunch of data and I need to classify stuff in another in I think it was emotion that was the that was the project I I was uh supposed to do. So I took a bunch of like in-person course. Um actually, the course I took was with um uh Joel Pino. It was um um it was a a course at the university she she was teaching and now she was at Meta and now she she out of Meta. Uh but it was a great course. But it was not the thing that helped me a lot. Like I took the course, but then I tried to do as much project as I could on the side in order to to ultimately do the project I wanted. Uh so it was a mix of like just getting enough information to get started and just like applying it to my research. And then Mo says, in my mind, there are two path here is learning how to actually build the model and then there's learning the math hands on with machine learning is a good book, but might be a little dated. I have it here. It's actually uh it's actually not too bad book. Uh yeah, uh it over there. Yeah, this one. Hands on machine learning with psychic learning. I have the old old version. I think it's like uh I don't know, like two thousand um uh two thousand something. It's a good book, yeah. I like I would say like it's a it's a pretty good book. Like the the machine learning honestly is not like if you already have a programming background, you should not be worried about machine learning at all, right? Like uh let me like let me like point it back here like like uh in in um it's very simple actually like in normal programming you have this, right, which is like the specs, right? You have a bunch of specs. Right? And uh what you're gonna do here is you're gonna like try to apply some logic, right? And then like you're gonna uh generate an output based on that. And it's basically automation, right? And then how you know if you're good is you're just gonna go and see the specs and do the difference between the two. And this you do it with tests. Right? Um that's the loop that you do in in normal programming, right? If you had no clue what machine learning is, right? Um you could still like learn it as a tool, a black box, right? Ef espe especially e essentially in in machine learning what you have is is the is the same thing, right? But instead of specs, you have data, right? So you have data. And like the data is arbitrary. Okay, it's just data like it's there's no one model that can do like everything perfectly a hundred percent. Like there's there's just like a bunch of data and then each of the data here, right? You have your little specs over there, right, that are attached to each of the row, which is like uh the target. Right? In some shape or form, you have that. Unsupervised learning, you actually don't and you're just trying to like cluster the data. But like that's roughly what you have. You have data and then target, which you can think about them as a spec. And instead of like trying to build the logic yourself, right? You're gonna use both of these, right? In like a a M L model, which like a M L model right, like this, which is actually trying to do the logic for you, right? You don't have to like hand write it. It will figure out the logic based on the data, right? And then it will give you like an out. An output. And what you do during this learning process is that you're trying to make your out good by looking at the target in some shape or form, right? And this is like your uh like your training, right? At at first, the model is um is garbage, so it's just gonna be like all random. But like at some point it's gonna be better and that's that's the idea. Um yeah, but like this is the the mental model you should have, right? It's just another way. If you're if you have a programming background, by the way, like uh machine learning should be very simple because it's just another way of thinking about the stuff. So you have that, right? That's M L, that's deep learning. This is what you have. And then there's like some specification here that you have to know about how to train these, right? And how which one to choose and all this stuff, right? Here like i a bit bit like the logic. What what data structure and algorithm should you use there, right? Depends on the specification and depends on like what my output should be, right? And depend like like my uh about the constraint and all this stuff. It's same thing here. It's exactly same thing. It's just that you don't just start with the specs, you start with the data. And the data will allow the model to kinda figure out the rest. And then there's like all different type of stuff, right? Um then you have L L Ms. So L L Ms are a bit different, right? In the sense that like you don't train them really like most of the time you 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 will not train them, right? So what you're gonna have is you're gonna go back to the logic stuff, which is like you have a bunch of specification of what you want, right? So this is L M. You have a bunch of specs right here. And these are it's just this thing here, right? That was trained for a long time with a lot of compute, with a lot of like parameters. So it knows it can knows a lot within its weight. So you give a bunch of specs, right? And then it will generate you a bunch of out, right? And then you go back to um the 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 previous stuff. And then here you're just gonna like uh check if it's good. Right now there's no there's not like awesome ways to check, right? And the only difference is that you can get a lot of intelligence like this without in doing any of the training, right? In also the cases. So but this is kind kind of like a stochastic software develop software development, right? That's how you should think about it. It's like even even like um uh I think I can find it. That was a pretty funny uh It's from the Claude people, uh the Anthropic folks. They said, yeah, this this tweet. Look at this. They said that like top tips from data science and machine M L engineering team that use Claude treat it like a slot machine. Like save your state before letting Claude work, let it run for thirty minutes. Either accept a result or start fresh rather than trying to wrestle with correction. Right? Like L L Ms are just divergent by nature. This is why they are able to generate stuff. So the idea here is that you should treat that box as stochastic software development, right? This is like data software development, and this is just like software development. So I hope this clears up a bit. Uh hi Holding, first time catching the live stream?
Yep, uh welcome. Um we're uh doing the uh the hyper vector. I'm just taking a detour here. I'm doing a C S bachelor from some university and particularly targeting an applied scientist job at some org. What do you think about applied scientist? Um yeah, it's a good, honestly, it's a good uh like uh applied scientists um figure out first if you like to do like research. That's what I would say, right? Um Yeah, uh try research first. If you if you hate research, applied scientist might be like not your cup of tea. You might be better off into like more of a M L engineer role, or like that type of like more engineering side of thing. Um because anything with scientist in an is in its name, you're dealing with a lot of uncertainty. So like people that actually thrive in this type of job are usually researcher that went to the academia route, right? Or did the PhD or master. And then decided like, you know what? I like to be paid actually. So they go into like a more um uh scientist uh position in the industry. Uh so to test this out, I always recommend people to kind of just try to apply to one of the labs and you're in that you're interested in in your in your university. Usually they they're very happy to um to to get the to get interns. Um yeah, during my undergrad, I I I entered into three labs. Uh yeah, and it was pretty fun. Like uh it was all different. Molecular biology, uh psychiatry, another one in like uh physical therapy, computational neuroscience. Okay, so this is good. And then what what you actually need to do here? So once we're there, we just need to multiply them together. It's like uh uh element wise, yeah, multiplication, numpy. I just need to multiply both. I can just multiply them. Okay, so um I just need to do like uh hyper vectors dot append. And then I'll do hyper vector feature hyper vector value. So this is the binding. I you know what? I hate that. I'll hyper vector binding. I'll just like literally spell it out. Bind that bound. Okay, hyper vector bound. Okay, this is the binding operation here. Right there, I store them right here. And then after that, once I'm done with the storing, I just need to multiply them together, right? So the step two is what? Is um the summation, right? Is that it? A bundling. Bundling operation. Uh okay, cool. So we're gonna bundle them. So the bundling operation is what is a summation. So what do I do here? I do what? I do uh we created those, so okay, so here technically like that's good. This is good. Bind each feature column vector with the hyper vector represents its value to form a unique vector for each feature. Get done. Bundle all feature for this row to create a single composite vector represent the entire row. Okay, right. So like then I did to do like um yeah, I need to sum uh anyway. Just just I'm just gonna sum them, right? Uh yeah, so something like np dot sum. And then I just gonna have the hyper vectors in here. Before doing that, actually, I'm just gonna print it. Print hyper vector. I should have two. And it's like what? I have it here. Fair, I I mean this is it, right? And like what do we have? It's uh it's this one multiplied, so minus one, minus one. One, one, this is good. Minus one, minus one, this is one. Okay, cool. We 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 got this step one properly. So step two, we got that, and I can just sum it, right? And then I can um uh bundled uh hyper vector bundled. Call that. I'm gonna print this out. I know there's better ways to debug, but I prefer that, just to see if that logic is good. And then I get this. I get, no, I get nothing. What the fuck? Uh I got zero. Oh, wait, no. I have to tell it the axis, right? Yeah. Otherwise otherwise it's gonna all be messed up, okay? And I think the axis here axis equal um what is it? I think it's like zero? I never know. I get zero, 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 minus one, one, and then we have minus one, minus one. Okay, this is not, uh this is messed up. I think it's one. Oh no, it's not one. It's definitely not one, because I have two. Yeah, I think it's zero. But why do I have a zero everywhere? Is it is it truly zero? Minus one and one, this is zero. And then we have minus one, one, this is zero. We have one, minus one. I have one, minus one, and I have one, minus one again. Okay, yeah, that's tr- it's truly, truly, truly zero. Which is a bit weird. And what? Seed? What is my seed here? This? Okay, let's figure it out. Any questions we have? I got an exam in like two hours, gotta prep for that. I will see you in next stream. Or please drop any source of communication to you in the chat, remember me? I will. You can actually join the Discord, it's in the description, so you can ping me there. And good luck with your exam. Um yeah, seed is forty-two and seven here, so we should be good. There's shouldn't be like anything that is weird. Uh one, one, uh minus one. Yeah, it truly is zero. Uh I don't know why. Okay, that's it. That's good. So this is our hyper vector. Vectors. Here. Um oh, uh it would be nice if like like the output could be following like the new lines, because right now it doesn't. Uh because if if it can follow the new lines, then I'll I'll have like less trouble reading this during my my debugging. Um okay, so like this is the bundled wait. Bundled hyper vector. Right? That's that. Uh this is actually the the bi- bound hyper vector. Uh no, we didn't, we fucked that up uh. Wait, this, oh okay, yeah. Okay, cool. But okay, so it's with all it's all zero. Uh so this is good, and then we have to normalize the bundled vector to maintain bipolar value. How did we more normalize again? It says what? The phel- the normalization function, typically apply the thresholding process that turns for any value greater than zero to plus one, and any value less than zero to minus one. Zero value are then typically assigned to either plus one or minus one. And I feel like uh I feel like our stuff are not that a great. Yeah, um because we're supposed to end with this. No way we're gonna get this from that. Uh we might be fucking up something up. Okay, well, let's let's do the normalization function, and then we'll see. So def normalize, well actually we don't need to def anything here, we just need to um go here. Uh step three normalization operation. And it's like if greater than one, uh sorry, if x greater than zero, we're gonna put it to plus one. If x smaller than zero, we're gonna put it to minus one. And if x is zero either or we need to choose. So um okay. Okay, so normalize between min and max. Now, how are we gonna do that? Now, like we need to threshold it. Threshold. Is it clip? Uh it's not clip. No, it's it shouldn't ca- it shouldn't be clip. Because if we have zero point zero 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 one I guess I could I could uh Hmm. Okay, wait, there's the where function. Where numpy. Return element chosen from X or Y depending on condition. Okay, this is good, this is good. We're gonna use that. Okay, so we're gonna do what? We're gonna do return element chosen from X or Y depending on condition. Uh so you have the condition, yield X, otherwise yield Y. X, Y, and we use it how? So np where A minus five, okay, well this is good. I'm gonna do that. So np where, and we have our hyper vector bundled. Uh wait, what is? Yeah, yeah. So this. We're gonna go if A if hyper vector is bigger than zero, we're gonna give it uh one, otherwise we're gonna give it a minus one. Right? And then this gonna be our hyper vector normalized. And then we're gonna return hyper vector normalized. Yeah, I'm gonna just print that out before returning. Right, so normalized hyper vector. There's uh most likely a bug in whatever we're doing right now. There most likely is. And then normalize hyper vector, we have minus one, one, minus one, minus one, minus one everywhere. Um and it's it's not right. Uh yeah, something is off with what we're doing. And we're turning all of that. Is it is it messed up all everywhere? Yeah, of course, it's messed up everywhere. Minus one, one, one. Yeah, this is messed up. This is uh so messed up uh. Yeah, it's also there's not one that we got it right. So after a good start, um I don't know, I I feel like it has to be with this. And how we're doing the R N generator, random number generator for minus one to one. But dimension. Yeah, but actually uh we don't need any of this. We don't need a function for that. Like that's a bit too much, I feel like. You can you can just take that, put it there. And we should be good to go, right? There's no there's no need to even do a function. I'm just gonna kill this off so that like we have this a bit more simpler. And it gave us the same stuff still. Yeah, and at some point we have hyper vectors, this is all zero. This is the issue. We should not have hyper vector of all zeros. But we do. The these two are the exact opposite. Yeah, they're exactly the opposite. Is am I messing up something important? The multiplication is fine, right? Like if we if we look at it here, right? You can't, sorry. I'll 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 just print it out, wait. Let's take a look at this. Jump it here. Just gonna put it into our debugging bucket. Right, let's see this stuff here, right? Um we have feature A. We have feature A here, feat- and value one. So we have that and that, right? And their seed of both is forty-two. And that's it, right? And like if you do this times this, you should get you should get like uh minus one, right? Minus one. Here is gonna be one, minus one, minus one again, and then you're gonna get one, one, that's one, good. And then you're gonna get minus one, minus one, that's a one, minus one, minus one, that's not a one. So this one is fine. And then feature B, you have one, 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 one everywhere, and then you have one, one, minus one, minus one, minus one. So you're gonna have one, one, because these two are ones, right? And then you're gonna get whatever here is minus one, minus one, minus one. That's fine too, right? And then you gonna have to uh do the addition. Right, so if you do the addition between the two uh you're ju you're just gonna, yeah, you're just gonna cancel everything out, but you should not have that. So I think my seed is messed up. Like my how I'm making the seed is absolutely messed up. Um I think this is the issue. Yeah. I think like I think my issues stem from this part. Right, this generation, because everything, the bending, the sorry, the binding and then the bundling is good. This is not what it should be. Uh which is the reason I think why it doesn't match that. Let's actually try to get an here. Um When normalizing bundle vector, you need to convert each element to plus one if it's greater than or equal to zero. Okay, yeah, this is, I think it's just like a uh it's not that important. Because it it's either or, it was not specified, so like we're gonna get all ones here, but uh each element, if it's greater than or equal to zero, and minus one if it's less than zero. Your code is missing this step, that's why you output. Okay, thi this is not right, like I got it right. Um the issue is not that, okay. The i issue is here, I feel like. I feel like I don't have the right um I don't even know if we should have the the choice here. Um It's still the same, normalize this step is incorrect. It's 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 super correct. I've I think it's super correct. If hyper vector bundle is bigger uh or equal than zero, we give it one, else you give it minus one. Give it positive value to one, negative value to minus one, and or zero probably. Currently your code is missing normalization logic. Double lead to one. Yeah, this is not, but okay, it's dude, just this is good. I think I'm a bit late. Well, we haven't missed much, right? Like we discovered a new field, which is artificial immune system. Uh and then I don't like I don't know if you ever heard about artificial immune system, but um hyper vector are related to that. Um Uh uh Mo, I don't know what you're, I think that there's some issue with your L M, I don't know what is. Um okay, anyway, uh this is fine. I think it's the random seed that is um somewhat a problem here. Um let's look back at the at this stuff. Am I supposed to take the the characters in consideration here? Um generate is there like a function that I don't know? Not by I don't think there is one way to do that. No. Yeah, I think I think I think this is fine. Yeah, I think this is fine. Uh like, to be honest, I think my only issue here is how I'm generating this uh uh sorry uh how I'm generating this. It's a hundred percent sure. I think this is fine, right? Like the random default RNG here, it's good. The seed is is given here, but I think it's the it's the this that might not be um might not be good. Yeah. I think this is what's fucking it up. And what's up here? Okay, we're we're so far gone here, minus one, one. Now this one is not even right, not even a little right. But I'm I don't know, I feel like I feel like the whole logic holds here, but that part. I think it's just that part, this part over here. Big like there's many ways we can implement a random thing. We can like have a single random number generator that goes like this. We could threshold it differently, right? Um Yeah, we could generate all the numbers in a dimension, append it to an array, and give it back. But that would be a mess. I think choice is the best the best way to uh to generate it. A- a- any idea, Mo? And if people are 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 asking why I'm asking him, it's because he created that thing. Uh random hyper vector with dimension five generated with value randomly assigned as one or minus one. Okay, here, this is it. It's each each element. No, it's good. I got it right here. You see here? That's it. So I'm 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 fine. Did I ma did I mess this up? No, it's minus one, one. That's good. It's choice. Okay. This is what's choice. Minus one, one dimension. This is literally the same thing that I've said I've said. Okay. And then random seed seed. Okay, it's do uh wait. It's doing this like that, np random seed. Okay, I think this is this is the issue. So it just do that, np random seed, and I give the seed, right? No, sorry. How how if how should I do it? Right, np random choice, okay, right. And then I do that. Will it impact it? Ah, you see? Told you. Told you all, right? I don't think you see. I to I told you this was the issue. You see, one, minus one, 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 one. Okay, we got it right. Uh give me a second, I'm just gonna remove all the prints. Okay, remove that. One, one. Ah, we got it! Okay, so the only difference between my code and the other code is because I was using this uh the default random number generator, right? But I was explicitly using this versus using the other one, which you can just like globally set the random seed. So that has a difference. Um like every time, okay, let's go full screen here, every time you're dealing um with debugging with randomness, you have to be very, very careful. You have to be very careful because like it doesn't mean that you're not right. It it makes everything like a uh super mess to to debug. It doesn't mean like that you're not right, and you might be right some of the time. So like it could have happened that some of the stuff will have flipped green and uttered not. So the way to debug stuff with either concurrency or um uh randomness with them is to verify your logic from like the base level and then like uh climb it climb it up until we reach like um some in insurance that like, okay, everything is fine except these little bits. Um especially if like there's an automated test of some sort, right? If there's an automated test of somebody is saying like this is how they did it in the paper and they give you their seed, and then like you're not you're not even getting the same result, you have to understand like how they which generator did they use and how they used it. Um yeah, but I got it right. You were all witness, like I didn't I didn't cheat anything, like um I was just trying to figure out how it was doing its uh uh random number generator. Honestly, that was that was a pretty solid one. Um yeah, really liked it. I think I I'm gonna do a full deep dive on them. Uh like uh artificial immune system, like what the heck? I I had no clue, zero, zero clue that this thing was a thing. Um yeah, a small uh uh feature request. Uh Mo, if you're listening to this if you could add reference to in the learn more section, that would be awesome. Like that would be that would be super cool, because then you could you could read more about it. Like I honestly had no clue about this whole field uh before today, and um I know that there's like a uh why where it's used section, but if I can use this like to jumpstart some some research of some sort, that would be awesome. Uh why does randomness affect it that much? Ha! Why? Be because like randomness in a computer is not really randomness. That's the issue, right? And you see, we're we're using seeds. Let's let me show you. Right, we're using seeds here. Here, right? Um thi this will anchor the the uh system in like the specific way it's gonna generate a number, which is not random, right? It look really random, but it's not. And then you will be able to reproduce that thing like multiple time. But it all depends on how many times, like if you like take a look at this, right? If I was to do this just before once I will not get it right. Look at it. It will not work. Right? Everything will be not working at all, and I get a totally different answer. Right? So like there's a lot of stuff to unpack here with this specific um like a hyper vector problem. First, the hyper vector don't mean anything, like it's an embedding. The embedding also in the L M don't mean anything. Right? That like um how to say, like it's just a bunch of number that for some reason in this specific L M it look like this, right? It has this dimension, it will it will it will map to these numbers, right? But in another L M could like look a bit different, but it still represent the same um same stuff. It's kind of the same idea here is that the 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 vector representation of the thing matter way less than like the manipulation you're doing. And we only use using seed here in order to be able to test it out. That's the only reason. Otherwise, in the wild, you will not need to do any of this, and uh yeah, just it's kind of it's kind of the idea. Like you can think about it about like um let's say if you take the example of the fruit fly, it doesn't matter like if the encoding for this specific fruit fly is like these numbers and another one is like these other numbers, if it's like uh same scents but different fruit fly. It kind of doesn't matter because in this flies it mapped to this thing, and in this other fly it mapped to the same thing. Um the specific position of the element doesn't matter. It's like how the embedding are used afterward to like uh to to map to a meaning that is uh that is of importance. Uh but in general, like if we go back to the randomness problem, in a computer, if you're um generating stuff it will generate the next thing in the in the sequence, right? Uh so you need to do it like really well if there's some test attached to it, but you have to set the seed properly, and there's many way of setting seed, right? Um and if you do it differently, you'll be uh it'll be uh affecting like your your generation. So you mean setting the seeds sort of buying the random number to come up in a specific way? Exact this is exactly what it does. Like there's no, there's like um uh we can check it out, like uh do apply random work. You see here? Let's take a look at it. So um the NumPy random module implement pseudo random number generator with ability to sample from a variety of probability distribution. In general, user will create a generator instance with default RNG and call the various method to obtain. Or RNGs are deterministic sequences can be reproduced by specifying a seed into their initial state. Right? Like it's always like this. There's there's very rarely, and I think in computer wise, I think I never saw true true the random number generator. It's always presum so the random, right? Um so there's just a big formula, I think uh maybe um I don't know, I don't know how they do it specifically. Uh Yeah, I don't know how like what's the algorithm uh behind. Um But yeah, that's the there's like a hash function of some sort, and then like with the seed it will it will go and then and then and then uh map to that. Um yeah. Yeah, so that's that's the that's the whole idea. So randomness, computer, usually they don't, they're not random at all. Yeah, any any other question, guys? I think this one was cool. Like um I picked it up because I didn't know the topic, and honestly, that was a good choice, like uh I had no clue, zero clue uh that this thing was a was a thing. So I have still we have five minutes, so anyone has any question about machine learning, deep learning, internship job, research, I'm here for that. Okay. What is the next stream topic? Ah, good question. I was I was playing them like uh in advance for a bit, and I'm looking at the next one. I honestly think I'm gonna do one with like um uh artificial immune system, right? I think that like I I'm hitching to di dive a bit into it, and I'm gonna use the Farmer, Packard, and Pearlson uh article, so that there's gonna be a topic on that. There's also gonna be a topic about like, I don't know if you saw it, but log attention, right? Um it it just came out like I think last week, and it's pretty cool. It's like um a way to calculate attention that is kind of linear, right? Um but that still retain the softmax kind of expressive expressive quality. In the paper, look genuinely pretty awesome. So we're gonna double do we're gonna double check that for sure. And then we're gonna still do some um some D P M L. I wanted to do the one with um um calculating Adam from scratch. I actually it's I think I think it's a good, this one is a good exercise to calculate Adam optimization, because like um it looks complicated. But if you go at it from the stochastic gradient descent angle, and then you see like, okay on momentum they just add this, and then okay, like there's this other algorithm that does it like this, and then Adam comes in you see the whole lineage and you see how the algorithm behave. And this the Adam uh algorithm is actually one that is still being used like frequently. Actually, it's Adam W that is used, Adam with weight decay. Um but it's a simple algorithm relatively, and uh still very used today. So if you understand it and you're able to code it from scratch pretty uh pretty useful thing to have in your backpacket. And la the other one that I want I was planning on doing is the R N N. Um like R N N are not used that much these days, but like anything that you're that I've seen in the last three years with like linear uh attention mechanism they like they always go back to ideas of the R N N. The R N N is simple, right? You have the you have the states, and you have the model and then like the input feed on itself uh on on the model, and then like um if you unroll it in time, like you you have the all the input in sequence. Um so it's kind of linear, uh there's some issue with it. Um, so it's kind of linear, uh there's some issue with it, but there's some cool stuff with which is like the linear, it's a linear complexity with respect to the input. Uh, a transformer has more expressive power, but it's like it's uh quadratic with the the number of input. So if you're trying to do long context L L Ms, it's hard with so like uh softmax attention. This is why like most like top-notch model right now, they are limited at like two hundred and fifty-six, I think, K um uh context window, because like doing more than this, you're gonna see a degradation. Um, if you're not using like some like fancy inference tricks or if you're not uh if you if you haven't changed the attention layer inside, right? Um, there are some, there are more and more paper in two thousand twenty-five that use like hybridization of the attention layers. So they use like uh some li- linear ones, a lot of them, and then keep the expressive power of like self-attention, which is quadratic. And then if you like add all of them together, it's still kind of linear, right? Um, yeah, but this is where it's going. So like uh you see Gemini two point whatever with one million context, good. It's not high-quality context still, it's still like uh uh okay-ish. Uh, but I think that a lot of research will be poured in the next year and a half on making just like very solid long context. And log attention, I think is like one of the breakthrough uh that will be useful. People are doing all sorts of weird thing to get like to reduce the complexity and they have been doing this since like two thousand seventeen. Um, but uh now the need is very pressing because like especially for coding, like I like coding is one of the areas where if uh you we had larger uh context window, it will just be better, like hundred percent better. Because most codebase can really like hit the hundred and forty K uh token limit where like most of the intelligence is, um, pretty fast. So when you get higher than this, everything break down because like they cannot, the L Ms cannot um uh use the context properly, right? Um, and even if you can you can take it as input and it's slow, it can still be garbage if most of this training data was not on like larger context because of like some weird like uh issue with the position uh interpolation. Um, yeah, so like there is a very real, real need to have long context L M specifically for coding, because this is where the money is. Um, so you see Google is going all in on that. Uh, we've seen some early kind of attempt with Meta with like the ten million context from Scout, which is like all not uh not that practical, let's say. Um, but yeah, that's uh so the one one of the topic I'm really interested in right now, like uh log log attention. Do you think good grades are directly correlated to being good at research? Um, oh, that's a good one, it's a good question. It are good grade related to being good at research? I I would say like most of the researcher, there's two kind of researcher, right? There's that I've interacted with, there's one kind that are doing the um uh the research specifically to put something in their C V and then go into med school. That's the one of the kind that I've seen time and time again. These folks that are doing that, they are insane. They kind of like optimized everything to get the most impressive stuff, right? Um, yeah, li- but like but like by doing this massive optimization, they haven't realized that they're also optimizing for something super useful, right? They're trying to optimize themselves to the point that like they're making brick scientific breakthrough, right? To like put the paper out there. Um, so these guys are were were very, very uh impressive and usually they wanted to go into med school or like some program that was very like uh high quality and stuff. Um, however, like an- anyone, anybody that did that, right, and you're seeing this, don't take it personally, right? But I saw that all of these folks hit a ceiling at some point, right? They all hit the ceiling of actually doing interesting research uh in general. Because if they have the choice of getting one paper or another and one will take like a year and a half or two years, another one will take like three months, they will do the three months one, cut it a day and move on, right? Um, and then there's like this other breed of researcher that it it's not correlated to grade. Some were good grade, some like just didn't give a shit about grade per se, they really like research. Um, and these ones, they were not correlated in my view with grades. They add one thing, they were uh uh intensively self uh able to self-learn anything, right? Like they they were very curious, right? And then they were very interested in the topic. I had one guy, he sucked at an uh university, all his grade were garbage. He liked ants, like the ants, he he loved that shit, I don't know why. He was in a in an ant's lab and I think he had like four or five publication about ants, ner- the the ants' nervous system. Um, yeah, he really liked ants, I I don't know what to say, right? But like he he was not correlated at all with grades. He actually sucked at most of the biology stuff we're doing. But like the research is different, like it's not the same thing. Research is like you're i- you're, there's no, there's no sort of grading whatsoever, right? There's open-ended questions and then you just have to go through it and then like uh uh be curious, look at stuff and then learn things and then mix-match the stuff together. If you're if you're good at like uh getting like a good initial grasp about thing, i- have a good ability to do things and then ability to like combine ideas in different shape, you're gonna be a good researcher, right? And if you're stubborn and able to go into a direction and have good taste, uh, yeah, usually you're gonna you're gonna you're gonna be able to um to 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 thrive in there. And I don't think it's correlated with the with the learning. Um, it's because I'm doing a M L research internship as an undergrad for Prater first year this summer and it's pretty off-putting seeing his previous intern get crazy high grade when I'm only getting average grade. Don't be, don't be off-put in any shape or form, man, like uh uh if you're interested about this topic, right, you're gonna do just fine, it doesn't matter. Like honestly, like grades in the university, there is some correlation to like how good you can be, but there's there's way to gain them. Like uh I've seen met people that took like the most idiotic class uh possible. There was one class about the moon, right? What the, like there's no, I like they were not interested about the moon, it just was one of the easiest class you could get. And then there was other folks that still got good grade and sometimes didn't got good grade because they took the class that were most interesting. And then there were the poor folks in engineering that were having like C plus or B minus, had the worst G P A I ever seen. Uh, but they were smart folks, it's just like the way they were, the thing were graded in their case were all different. Like uh they were cur- graded in a curve, so they had to weed out people. Um, that's how like this this there stuff was uh was uh um was graded. So like, don't worry too much about the grades of other folks, right? Try to try to help as much as possible the lab, try to collaborate as much as possible and try to learn as much as possible. That's the only thing that matters in research, it doesn't matter, the the rest does absolutely doesn't matter. There's a big element of luck also, right? An element of luck and and uh just like, yeah, just just pure luck. Like one of the my first paper, right, like I'll show you, like um uh zinc finger of the optic lobe. Like look at this. That was my first paper, look at this stuff. The zinc finger of the small optic lobes calpane bind polybicoidin. I was there, like look at this, I'm right here, that's me, right? Um, and it's in the journal Journal of Newark Chemistry, like this pip- like this journal is pretty big, right? And then I'm with Wayne Sassen, which is like uh one of the genius guy in um molecular biology of learning, right? Um, to be a hundred percent honest, I had no uh, I can get it, I I could show you for you, like it's like a a fifty pages paper. I have no clue what they did in most of the paper, right? It just happened that when I started my f- like that was my first molecular biology experience ever, right? And then my last. And I went into this lab for an internship for six months and there wasn't, I had no clue what the heck I was doing and I was really interested about this guy research. Just like I read six of his paper and I was like, I wanna work with this guy. I told him, we're able to find a grant, I got into an internship with the guy and then I was assigned with this other guy that was doing like some research. I for two months, I had no clue what the guy was doing and I was trying to follow along and he told me like do this, do this, and I was doing the research. At some point, I was alone after two months because the guy went and did other stuff and that was my research now. And like day in, day out, I was just trying to figure out what the heck I was supposed to do and like what the lab was going for. And I after three months, I figured it out and I knew that I just had a bunch of um how to say, like uh uh steps to do in order to generate the result that they wanted at the end with their Western blood. And the thing was simple, right? It's like I had like um um a bunch of D N A. Well, actually, I I'm gonna try to find for you, like um, give me two second, I'm gonna I'm gonna go into my I'm gonna go right there. Save to PDF, uh yes, I want to save it here. Okay, so I think uh I'll just find the paper. Yeah, this one. I'm gonna show you. Okay, so that's the actual paper. And what I was doing okay, where are the figures? Oh, they're at the end. Oh yeah, I think it's this, this, okay, that's what I was doing, here. Okay, you see this? Right, that was my protein, right? This is this is my protein, I had to slice it up. So I sliced it up, right, to cut this, so that like I had different type of motif, right? So like this is one big protein and he had like this soul binding domain, this catalytic domain and this like zinc fingers motif. And I had to make like a modified version of this protein that had one or many of the zinc uh finger domain. And we we were looking at like how good this thing was like binding to ubiquitin based on that. That was my sole contribution, I cut this stuff up, it took me a month and a half and then I took that thing and I ran like Western blood again and again in order to test with ubiquitin, how much it was it was it was like uh 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 like binding and that's it. I I remember, this one is mine, this one is, it took me like slightly one month just to journey that shit, right? And then that's it, like I I got that result. This is the my only contribution to this whole paper, right? But it's a big one, right? It's a huge one and like a very good um, a very good journal, right? So like, am I better than uh other molecular biology folks? Because I got my first paper after like four months bumbling like an idiot in a molecular biology lab? No, I just got lucky, right? Um, there is some element of luck in research that you can foster. So if you stick for longer, you're gonna get lucky, right? If you collaborate with other other people, you're gonna get lucky, right? If you push through like stuff that you don't, I could have quit it after three months because I didn't know what I was doing. But I just keep on going because like it was fun, genuinely, and I learned a lot, right? So be- because I was learning and then I was want, I wanted to be there, I was able to to work a lot and I did some very interesting thing. In this type of lab, there's always like a lab assistant, right? And this woman doesn't have a, that didn't have like a master or a P H D or any sort, she was just like a research assistant. Um, but she was a genius with all the protocol, so I was asking her like the dumbest question you could ever see, right? And she didn't have any um uh objection because like she was just glad that like some some undergrad student was asking her um question about like uh stuff that she was doing really well. So she helped me a lot and then with that, I was able to get good result. And then I was able to be included in that paper and that's that. So, um, great, don't worry too much about it, just try to get as lucky as possible. A recommendation though, did you read about the R T X algo paper? I think it's a title XX transpose is faster or something? No, I I haven't read it, like if you can link it to me, uh I will will gladly um uh read it, so R T uh R X T X. R X T X, um, algo. Is it this one? Is it this? I know where is Amayin, glad to to be helpful, um. X X T, oh yeah, I think I saw it on Twitter, um. Yeah, but I I haven't seen it, so a very like pure algorithm paper, is it, was this thing like discovered by L M or something? Uh. No, the extension only hold a subject for large matrix. Let's go by commenting machine learning based search method would come, I think I'd, I think I've seen it around, yeah. That definitely we can go through it, it seems not to be so big. Yeah, it's not too bad. Discover, I think they did R L guided lo- okay. So it's not L Ms, okay, cool, nah, yeah, I could definitely check it out, no, for sure. Okay, so I'll keep that in mind. Um, perfect, folks, any other question before we call it today? We learned a lot today with the the artificial human system. Who would have thought, who would have thought that this thing was a thing? Jeez. All right, perfect. So I wish you all a great start of the week, right? Um, keep it up, uh it was super fun. And do check out the platform, right? Super cool, I love it and uh yeah, there's always something to learn in the deep learning, machine learning um uh curriculum here. So have a good one, everyone, see ya.